You'll use an old farm road and create a construction road and that's what you'll do all your work like. All your equipment in and out. They've been back a couple of times now pitching that that's a real hardship. It's a financial and a physical hardship. They now would like to basically use the two roads to put up some kind of bond to repair the roads that they have just brought up.
Well, it's a split.
Yeah, and they will still use this construction road for market, right? Up to a certain number of units.
No, not on units, to build the roads.
We would use the farm road to construct the proposed roads to materialize the subterranean. At that time, after 2000, we would structure that as a subterranean. At that time, it was much heavy duty. And we switched the access to the site from to the town road. And the money is going to be still in the county.
So the heaviest thing we would see on Winter Circle and Breeze Way, right?
Breeze Way.
Would be cement trucks for the foundation, that kind of stuff. All the bulldozers and heavy duty stuff with previously used.
And with the continuous, you know, the town, you know, how to do it. Now, versus building the proposed road, not all that much.
When you built the road, Jerry, I wasn't clear on this from this letter. Is that including putting in the subsurface infrastructure, drainage and the...
The proposed, the proposed.
You're putting in that rough road, the base road. That's including the subsurface improvements?
Well, since the roads had, it's been, you know, a long, long time.
You don't want talking about the new roads you're building on top.
Oh, the new road.
Before you switch over to using the town road.
You're gonna put sewers and everything in with the roads, right?
The proposed road.
Right.
And that would all be in the heavy construction farm road phase. So we're talking semens for foundation, lumber and material trucks for the equipment for the actual trade.
And that's the houses would be finished without the people living in the houses, you know, using the proposed road. That had a little bit of a go for it.
No, no, I understand. You're also gonna have some kind of heavy equipment there to dig foundations and to do final grading, I would think. So I just don't want you to support the thing that you're totally eliminating.
He's talking about that, he's talking about the well rigs. Trust deliveries for...
And doesn't need for a bond on the road of some. And he's saying a reasonable limit, which I assume means negotiator. Something that would fall into your bailiwick, then?
In accordance with the board's request, yeah, February, we provided them with a two bond asset for complete rehabilitation of both roads. Since there's no way to determine how much damage. If one road was utilized for all of the structure, how much damage that road can incur? So in order to help the applicant formulate an alternative, we provided, I think we have a comp of an estimate that would be for the complete repair of Winters. We would think repair to Breeze Way is significantly longer. The cost for that full repair was $98,000, whereas Winters was $37,000.
Okay, when you say complete repair, what does that mean?
Well, if the road was to be damaged by concrete trucks, like damaged, I don't mean, you know, it's like curved. But if the road was to break down or hold a structural, you wouldn't stop it there. It'd be like a check. It would be the existing top course that you were going to reclaim, and then it would be repainted. We'd also have a price in there, I believe, on Winters for some curbing, which is curbing damage. No, I'm sorry, on Breeze Way. Winters does not have curbing, so that's why it's not...
So we're talking about the amount of financial security of proposed value engineering because computer one potentially need to replace a new top course and entire roadway network surface is prohibitively high. To the point of absurdity, I think was...
I agree with that.
I would be very surprised if you didn't, Mr. Fine.
It's complicated, I just want to know, you have the condition, the road effect, you know, it's... But we look at such during a bonding situation, I practically... But we're allowed to put up...
Yeah, but the bond gets reduced as certain portions of it are, I mean, as it goes away, as it goes along and it's not destroyed, I mean, it gets reduced over a period of time, right?
Yes, because the applicant must proceed with bonding of the road, yes. But under these new proposals, the applicant's gonna do the majority of the work through the construction access road. And then all the work associated with the houses will be through Winters Breeze Way. We don't know what time or how you'd like to configure that so that they can get it back. House construction will not be as extensive, the second house will be fine, it can stretch out over some... So I don't know if that really lands itself to a part of...
What do you mean, in terms of like trucking, dirt, gravel, drops, you know, machine...
Did dirt should be included with those swift, like part of the swift construction? Gravel, dock, drop, and the, I think, most of the courses, that's what I'm...
You're using the town roads, this purpose is not new.
No, of course not. I know that, but realize also, I mean, I want a reality check from the board here, too. We had a public hearing on this thing. We had everybody and their mother here. We came up with an alternative that said we're gonna use a construction road and you're not gonna be on your roads. Okay, now that's all gone away and those people aren't here. And I guarantee you, in my lovely little setting downs at Elsie's or the diner or wherever else I'd sit down while living in this lovely little town, there's gonna be a number of people walk up to me and go, "What the hell happened? I went to a public hearing and this was done." You know, and it was said that they wouldn't be on our roads, there wouldn't be these problems, that we would be on those construction roads and we were protected. And we never heard anything about it and we got this stuff driving up and down our roads. Okay, so, I mean, I want to be, I want to make sure everybody is comfortable with that situation and that we have covered ourselves, you know. That's why, you know, to the point of absurdity, I'm not sure I agree with that term, you know, in this situation. I mean, I understand that we might be asking for an upper end guaranteeing coverage on this thing, but I'm not sure that's inappropriate for moving away from what we set up originally in front of the entire public with all the participants. And it wasn't like there were two or three people here. I mean, it wasn't just Tony Bernstein and, you know, one of the first, we had a number of people at that public here. So that's my concern. What does the board...
When we were looking at this, I believe Joe Henry was the engineer at the time. The reason I remember this was, is I recall, and maybe you guys remember, coming off of this where the wetland is, there's like a stream and kind of meanders down there. It's almost kind of like the ends and ends up going down underneath the road. I was really glad when you said you weren't gonna use this road because, but Joe Henry, I brought it up to Joe Henry when I was out there doing a side talk. And I was like, nobody ever said that there's like water discharge coming from these wetlands and we're gonna ruin it by putting a road in. So I was like, oh, good, this is gonna settle the problem. Joe Henry said, well, we'll come back and address it when they go to put the road in. And here we are, right back, environmentally, and I was happier when they...
All right, but now we're using both. That word's still going in.
I know, now we're going back to the road being in, and I don't know if Sean's head will...
Not that road alongside that, I mean, it's a stream. We're talking about using the existing farm road as a continuation of my mother's driveway.
That goes up and around?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and is that that, like, culvert or something? Does that go up there with the spot that...
We only need one culvert because of the improvements the applicant was proposing about wetlands. I could walk that road, I think, two years ago, Jerry, with you, Dave, I don't remember any wetlands. There may have been wetlands along the northern edge, which was initially where the construction access road was.
Maybe that's what it was, it was one went up the side. Okay, 'cause I knew it was like, it was a stream, it wasn't...
Yeah, that's the boundary between us and the neighborhood property.
Okay, I'm sorry then.
Yeah, it's nowhere near that now. We've switched focus to using the existing farm roads, continuation of my mother's property, and which I have always used to years for heavy equipments, farm equipment. And when I started farming there in 1990, I did improvements, dump trucks went up there, everything.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, sorry.
Okay, but this proposal is...
Yeah.
Shaun, this proposal we're talking about now in this way, that now brings in, is this different than what you looked at before?
Yeah, this is, as Neil had said, this is a hybrid. Initially, it was one or the other, construction access road or bond and go through Winters Breeze Way perhaps. Now they're looking to build a construction access road through up to, we interpret as the base course, so it would be all the subsurface drainage and all that. And then at that point, I assume we abandon the construction access road, and open up Breeze Way for delivery materials, like the houses, concrete trucks, as you said, trust delivery, box trucks, plumbers, things like that.
So that would require a modification of your recommended bond?
Perhaps. Perhaps. The protection, I don't know if the board wants a protection there for the town, for the roads. Obviously, the town's life is a little much further down if they would use these construction access roads for heavy equipment. With less opportunity for the roads to become damaged. We could revisit the estimate, but essentially the estimate is for the cost of repairing roads.
You know, this is always, this is always the new effect that had the discussion in the past. And we discussed that everything has to come up, you know, for jobs, for the plaza, who else can be, they come into the hand of. And we deliberated this matter pursuant to our estimate, and we're trying to meet the board here, we thought that this was a reasonable way, you know, that we all get something we have to work with. I'm covering up this, and we're trying to meet the board. And the bonds, you know, the roads are all rented, they put shit, driving them the other day, you know. And, you know, I thought, you know, who wrote this, and what's that, you know, it's untenable. So we're willing to put up, and the house and money that we took, send along, find a way of, you know, patch and use that. So there's no arguments as we go through getting into these...
Are the roads in disrepair?
I wouldn't use the word disrepair, but they probably are due to be addressed relatively shortly, from the highway perspective. In terms of when that road is slated for repair, but I would agree, they are not ready to go.
Also about Winters?
Well, Winters, I believe, is better than Breeze Way. But one other item, your condition did not, did not explain why you put the condition there, because you said whether it's the weight of the trucks. One of the things the board mentioned is the quality of life and essentially the intensity of use. Essentially, they're too dead and repaired now. So I'm not sure if that's something that weighed into your condition when you formed it.
That weighed heavily in the condition. That was probably heavier than the road repaired somewhere.
Did the applicant consider hours of land, maybe trucks to be coming in? I know that there are going to be super heavy trucks, but on Breeze Way and the other one, you know, how many hours?
I think they're all, I can't remember how many hours, they're all...
They stand at work.
I mean, I think it's even in the plan, I don't know if it says, you know, 9:00, 4:00, 7:00, 8:00, 9:00. I think it's something like that.
Yeah, it is, it's standard work. Yeah, it's basically all day long. It's all day long. But yeah, it was quality of life issue more than the worry about the condition and black tie. It was more the quality of life issue.
Particularly the top of these roads, a lot of...
Giovanni, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little confused, I'm a little fuzzy with this, and I'm new at this, so at least bear with me.
Tell them not to.
I'm a little confused, I'm gonna come to all this stuff. If you're gonna construct or improve this existing farm road to use it as a construction road?
It's a town that's been used and then here, and seen heavy been served, so nothing other than...
Okay, so you're also better yet, you don't even have to...
We're gonna use this road for access to the proposed road.
So you're proposing that you're gonna use, you wanna use this road for the initial site work to be done until your roads are in. And a lot of the heavier or heaviest equipment is done. Then when you start building the homes on the sites, you wanna use the town road. But if you can use the farm road for the heaviest equipment, why is the farm road not usable for when you're building houses? That's what confuses me. If you're already using the farm, why not continue to use it?
Well, because you know, farm road comes in off of Maple, and it impacts, there's four road bunches blocks in there, or it impacts two of those lots. As long as you're using that farm road, you're really limited on...
It impacts a lot of the market?
Well, it's two of their prime bonds, so.
Bonds would see and no construction.
And so that's no more, so it hurts us in the beginning, it hurts the marketing ability. And then it also will impact in the subdivision, a lot that it comes to. And then we're keeping it open as drawn up until we're, when the last stick is put in the last house.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Now, now, I get it. I knew there had to be a...
And then we gotta come to the town and have some interpretation that, okay, you can stop, you can't stop. It's a very untenable...
So are you proposing that you use the newly installed Winters Circle and Breeze Way lane of the houses? Are you intending to dedicate those roads to the town before you start using it?
They won't accept that.
They won't accept.
Generally, what happens is they get, they improve the skin market. We put the road, we put the base line, we're working on the houses. The town probably doesn't want us to pay until we're 9% or more. And then, and then we would try to, the town would accept it at some point, way later in the process. So our bonds will be alive until they accept the road, so they can accept it.
Metal negotiation, did they have to, I mean, which is right up the road, it's on me, did they have to put together a bond to do, to put in their roads?
Yeah, metal negotiation is gonna have to put up a bond for their roads to be done entirely. They are a little bit different in that they are actually going to be rebuilding our road, each schoolhouse road is gonna be realigned by them. So it is slightly different than this.
It's not typical to prohibit house construction on town roads, that stuff. You know, that's not, the town roads are made for tranches, is the way it is. This is an unusual requirement, which if you carry it through to the end, it's unpractical.
Rather than construction, the access roads, applicant has thus to prepare, to estimate, because they were required to use a construction access road. They wanted to look at what the town would consider if they could use the town roads. So we prepared this assessment, that's a question of the applicant. Typically, it's not done, which was done in proportion of the negotiation to essentially eliminate the condition requiring that to be a construction access road.
Okay, so the number you gave them that was, point of absurdity, was, was to eliminate the construction road and they would be using totally at that point the town roads?
Yes, and we gave them both, because we didn't assume, based on our understanding, they would be using both Winters and Breeze Way. Because they would either put one road to other, so that's why we gave it both. If they were to limit to one or the other, they would only give one or the other amount, shown on the estimate.
But they're proposing to use the construction road for the heavy stuff, so they're bringing a hybrid to the table.
They are.
Okay, and are you proposing to use the construction road and one or the other? Are you looking to use the construction road and both?
Well, we can use the construction road in the beginning, to live. At that point, we have two roads that come home, that may be by the same road.
So both is the answer? It's rather than concentrated in one.
So who'd the traffic?
We would be fine with just using one as a town, just use one. But I'm not so sure what you were talking about, with the homeowners in here, the homeowners in that one that...
Oh, we count how many homeowners on one or the other. And then the percentage of how likely they are to find me at the diner or Elsie's. And we do a calculation, it's easy. No, I see the word thing, sir, too.
For the homeowners, maybe on weekends or something, we at least get deliveries so they're not on weekends when people are gonna be home to try and hook these people out, so you have... And that was the biggest concern that at least that I've heard with traffic for the people that are known in those developments. And if there's some way we could kind of come to a meeting and say, okay, we'll get all your deliveries on Friday instead of coming on Saturday.
We very rarely can.
So it wouldn't be a huge thing, you'd say, that you could have like pickup trucks or whatever, but there won't be any heavy machinery?
Two of the existing residents on those two roads, their access is greatly improved because of response time and everything. If something happens, it really is to their benefit, you know, I believe that they recognize that, take that for granted.
Yeah, and I think it's...
You wanna get them in here better? I was at the public hearing.
If we just limit weekends, I mean, I'd be...
Yeah, Shaun.
One other thing, when you certainly have it in our budget, when this application with the board, or when this condition was reviewed before the board in November, the main item was cost. There's costs associated with construction access road that the applicant was worried about. Now, and understandably, there is impacts to four lots, and that is considerable impact. Could the access road, have you looked at maybe relocating the access roads, it only affects two lots? One of them being the existing lot, existing home, so if only one developed lot is affected? I mean, I think the access road was arbitrarily picked there because there is some of the farm road right there right now.
Certainly, this, the road that I'm going to use for the construction, you know, inside.
Use the farm road, then we're building a road in the field, so. I understand.
Since the marketability to being able to provide some nice homes, so I'm considering this farm road.
You know, what's the general practice, if I was building 12 homes on Rock Hill, Maple Avenue?
The answer is, this board, since I've been here, has not approved the subdivision whereby you have to go through another subdivision to build. We have always built, if you look at, we had Sawyer's Peak, then we have Remington Ridge, and then we had Breeze. So we've been accessing off of more thoroughfare than going through subdivisions. I don't believe we've had any subdivision approved that we had to go through another subdivision to build. We have been pending, we have that with... But we do that, Pan Park, but Pan Park has not been approved nor has it built. So this is, that would be the first one that is gonna go through a subdivision to build.
Well, it...
Well, there hasn't been approved yet either, so.
What type of construction is used on these two roads? Is it similar to what would be used on a thoroughfare like Maple Avenue? I mean, can't this, even though this road goes through a subdivision, and I understand the quality of life issues around that, but can't the road handle the traffic?
The answer is, I don't do roads, and I'm sorry, but I don't know about roads. So I'll guess.
We haven't done any testing, you know, the thickness of it, and how the condition of it, but essentially, yes, it's a typical town road.
Typical town road, yeah, that's right. The road's a road generally, generally. There is nothing, it's not like we're going down peat lane. They're not suggesting we don't go down, we'll just drive with this. Now we give a concrete trip.
The standard that we use in the original road, you know, zero foot houses, I think, is a road. Very close to this thing, because that was the system proposed, but it's not changed.
I'm struggling with the whole thing. I see both. Possibly when Winters Circle was put in, didn't we talk that Goshen's standards for building roads are, you know, very high? And that your, the subbase on Winters Circle and probably Breeze Way is probably pretty substantial, more so than even state requirements? So it was a good chance...
Current standards, you know, you know when those were built, current standards?
Current standards, that we have, have been a long time, that's been in place a long time.
Eighty-eight, they were eighty-eight, so in fact, we really don't know what's going to happen.
So the question is, were they built to stand?
Well, the question is also, was it to stand?
I actually pulled out the, this one, I pulled out the original file, maps for both roads. And, which is, I gotta say, which is why I say that the roads that we have in the road today are very similar to the roads that we built back then.
I mean, what I'm hearing is that the town, the roads, the two roads will probably take the track. The heavy construction could come off of the farm road, and they're going with farm roads. I know why they wanna use it, because it's already had tractors and everything in the world. Believe me, it'll take heavy equipment, if it's an old farm. So I mean, I understand why they don't wanna build another one in the field. I'm hearing that all that will probably work with a proper bond, we will probably be covered on the road, etc. Again, the only thing I wanna throw back in, in there is that realize, and for you new guys, who it makes a lot of sense for, let me give you a, you know, this is what, my 15th year? I could've shot somebody and done it this time now, so. But I will tell you that when you have a public hearing, okay, and everybody comes out and you set a deal, you know, you need to think real hard about why you would change that later, what your rationale was at the time, what your thought process with the time was, what the consideration of the public's concerns were at the time in the public hearing. If you're gonna override that, then in my opinion, we need to have a very warm and fuzzy feeling about why we're gonna change that, because we went through this extensively before, all right? And it wasn't just a one or two day event. So I mean, I, I believe the roads will probably take it. I think the construction alternative is probably a good suggestion to get the heavy equipment in there. Then you probably could use the two roads without a whole lot of destruction of the road. And to tell you the truth, with no more units in the building, probably not a whole lot of disruption on the quality of life. I believe all those facts probably work, but you also have that other element, Bill.
I think, I think there's a big difference, I mean, from what was presented in public hearing, obviously, again, I live on the road. Back to the heavy equipment becoming on internal, not on the roads. That's where you're gonna have a lot of the heavy equipment, frequency of trucks, dump trucks, everything's rolling in the long material on a very, you know, frequent basis. Once we get beyond that and we start constructing homes, we're not gonna see that kind of traffic.
I agree with you.
For them, I wish they did, but it's not gonna happen.
I agree with you, but I remember the discussion about the furnace installers, the shingle deliverers, the curtain and sink deliveries. I mean, I remember all those, and you do too. I mean, they, you know, they were talked about, our dog groomers who are gonna have to come up because our dog got dust on them. I mean, it was, it was, you know, they were worried about everything made, isn't it? Okay, so, again, I'm not saying I don't believe this alternative doesn't solve the problem. I don't agree that you guys get to be real sensitive about the amount of bonds. I think a heavy bond is probably appropriate if we're gonna deviate, you know, but I mean, that is my opinion. But I think it works, and I, but I think that the bond, you know, I don't, I don't see going with a real soft bond. I want a bond that fixes it if things go bad, I mean...
We're not building an interior road, so where money would be spent there. So some of that money that would've gone to building that farm road, upgrading the farm road, certainly should be allocated to the bond of the town. If you want to clean some of that traffic on your roads.
My attorney is looking very bothered and puzzled with this one. Something else?
Yeah, something else, related, but it's...
Mexican food earlier or something?
While me and Giovanni can blame previous board members who weren't here, you know, who were the...
No, I don't think I'd go there, that's probably, okay, all right.
The one question I have is repeatable practice.
The one question I have is repeatable practice. This is probably won't be, because now you have several, you know, developments in, and you're going to be, do we want to set a precedent where we don't, you know, allow traffic to go through, you know, or kind of show special privilege to existing units like that?
Yeah, it was so long ago that, to tell you the truth, that it was so unique, it was the first time we ever had one. And like Neil said, we still haven't had one approved where they go through a subdivision. And when was this first occasion? I mean, you, you weren't shaving, and I was good looking and had dark hair, so, you know, let's face it, it's been a long time ago that this started. But at that point in time, yes, we were dealing with a unique situation, but like Neil said, it hasn't really changed, which we still have approval. So we were trying not to set the precedent of allowing people to go through with heavy equipment on the roads. And I see your point. Are we now, are we now in a position where we're looking at setting a precedent of stopping people from using public roads? Yeah, it's a double edged sword. I don't know how to evaluate it.
I don't think that's legal. I think it's illegal to take a public road, build for the public, and then to be discriminatory, especially against working people who are making a living, by accessing the road to get to their work and build a house.
Were you here fifteen, ten, twelve years ago when the applicant? I do have my attorney. Am I wrong here? I mean, if they voluntarily offered it and agreed to it, I don't think there's anything illegal about it at all, so.
The only thing that's different is the market condition is entirely different from what we had at those kind of discussions. Thought that that would be the way to go.
That is true. I'll give you that one too.
I think that the applicant is trying to mitigate.
They're getting what?
Well, I mean, if you're bringing the heavy traffic through the other road, I think that's, if I, I'm thinking, if I lived where we live, I'd much sooner see the heavy traffic go through that farm road. I think that's what drives people crazy.
Besides all the response to that, plus it's also equipment that more likely will damage roads, just as a bit, you know?
Aren't they doing it because we said no, no? Bringing all the heavy equipment in to the public roads? I mean, were we basically opposing that? You know, so now, I mean, I don't see that they're, I see that they're adjusting their plan, but they're adjusting their plan because when they said, we don't want to use a construction road, we're bringing it all into public roads, we pretty much said, oh, that's not how it was set up, and that's not what we're thinking about. So I'm not going to give them a whole lot of credit for coming up with an alternative that's halfway between, when we were basically saying, no, fish over first. I mean, that's my recollection, maybe I'm wrong, but that is where I thought we were, we were leaning that way, so.
No, you're a hundred percent correct, as far as I recall.
Yeah, I, again, so I'm not going to give them credit for that, personally, I mean, but again, I, I'm not opposed to it, I think, I think it probably does work, but I think our responsibility to the town is that we keep a pretty strong bond and say that if it goes bad, we are assured, our engineer tells us we are assured, of taking care of those roads if they do go bad. And I don't have a problem with you giving them consideration, meeting with the highway department and saying, look, we're, yeah, we'll give them a, you know, we'll give them a consideration because the road is this much down the road, you know, down the way already. I don't have a problem with that, but I, but I do think that a legitimate bond, you know, is not an unreasonable request.
We'll concentrate more damage on that length of road, whichever one it is, than just the pedestrian traffic that lives there. And the incidental delivery trucks that come to deliver UPS, I mean, there's certainly going to be a much, it's going to accelerate the deterioration that's basically done.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President.
Can I make a comment with, when you're deciding about this bond, size of the bond, there's quite an important economic issue here, and it goes to the benefit of the town because they plan on building twenty-five homes in the town, and they hope that conditions improve, that the average house itself is about four hundred thousand dollars, that includes the land and, you know, all the improvements after they invested a million and a half dollars in the improvements to be able to build a home. So if you take, that means that you're going to have, that the completion of this project, and you know the quality of the people that come here to build this, you've got one of the very finest homeowners in Hudson Valley, three of them, Mr. Shatron, and you know from their reputation, the type of project that they will do, you're going to have ten million dollars of brand new assessed valuation. And I think if, if you're buying great school, county, county happens to be about fifty-five dollars a thousand, that means that you're going to create five hundred fifty thousand of new tax revenue per year after this is completed. So I would just ask you respectfully, consider those economic factors when you decide about this bond.
Well, actually, those are factors that they ought not to consider.
Right.
Those are factors they ought not to consider as a planning board. Those are factors that the town board considers when setting the zoning and deciding what they want to do, what kinds of roads they want. But it's not up to this board to determine what's in the economic, overall best tax interest of the town when they're making their determinations. They're bound by zoning code to do what they're supposed to do, as well as state laws respecting that. And one of that is not saying, let's go ahead and do this because it's going to generate positive economic income for the town. It's just not their role. I'm not saying it's not a valid argument, it is.
Well, you might say it's not their role, but I'm speaking as a former mayor in a community that doesn't have the economic base that new people fortunately enjoy, and we, the direction we, the elected officials, gave our appointed officials, the planning board, we told them that we have to consider economic issues in the power of our community. And I think it's a practical, you might say it's not their purview, but for a practical matter, it's extremely important, the quality of life and the continuation of what you enjoy in this town.
I agree with all those last sentences you said.
I do too, but...
That in fact, it's important for the town, but I still stand that this board is not allowed to consider certain things, and that's one of the things that's what you're basing in trouble.
Well, I know, I'm very, very cognizant of what their primary responsibilities are, and I think you're taking seriously, and I've sat in a lot of towns for many, many years, forty years, in these type of meetings, and I've got to compliment you on how serious you are, and what a good job you do. I mean, for no other reason, this thing has taken long enough that it's because it's been well reviewed.
It's changed its face a few times over the years too, but, but again, my concern is, and I understand what you're saying, but I do have a responsibility to the town as well to make sure that they don't incur a cost of a road repair, you know, and, and again, it's a bond. If it's not used, it comes back eventually. It's not like it goes away and we hold. And I just, I, I know it is a financial burden over a period of time, but, but I, I still feel we have a responsibility to make sure that if we, if we cut a deal, allow a modification of the original application as it was proposed and how we go forward, that we do cover that potential for impact. If we go, if we go a little bit to conservative side, I don't have a problem with that.
I understand the pickle that the board is in, but I, I would, projecting out as the developer, posting a bond, and then going to the town highway department engineer down the road five, seven years from now, and trying to get that money back?
We return them all the time. I've been here for fifteen years, and I will tell you.
Yes, you do on a new, on a new performance bond, on a new road, absolutely. Not a maintenance bond on an existing road. That's, that's a nasty thing. That's going to be a very, I wouldn't want to be on the town's side on that one. I wouldn't want to be on the developer's side on that one. And that's going to get, that opens, that puts us in an adversarial position that I think can get us...
And I will agree with you that I don't think I've been in the maintenance bond argument before. That's why I have that guy.
What I'm struggling with is, these delivery trucks, concrete, lumber, whatever, contractors, they're coming down Winter Circle, they're coming down Breeze Way Lane, it's the same trucks that are coming down Houston Road, Maple Avenue, Seventeen A, and every other road in the town. How come we're not asking them to put up a performance bond for the repair of both roads? Why is it just Breeze Way Lane and Winter Circle? Is this just to make it more difficult for them? I don't know.
Well, it was in the public, again, it was in the public hearing the concern was raised. The developer offered to do it, we accepted it. We told the people at the public hearing that that's how it was going to be done. We didn't go out there and say, everybody drives down our road, S to do X, Y, and Z. In this case, when the question was brought up, when the concern was raised, the developer, who's not here now, I guess, but the developer at that time said, this is what we will do to alleviate that concern and to address. Now, in the public hearing process and the secret impact assessment process, that was a valid mitigation of that concern and impact, and was in the process at the time.
I was not here for that, but looking through the adoption of the negative declaration and the statements, it does not appear that that was an impact. That was raised as a primal issue and mitigated as an armpit issue. There are construction issues in here, that's not one. Construction issues even with respect to access that have to do with respect to the escape of the site and other issues, there is nothing in the negative declaration that goes on in great detail. It was just fluffed over, there's a lot of detail here as to, this was part three, so we don't have the D P I S, but you go into great detail here as to each of the environmental issues and whatever mitigation there were. This was not raised in any way. I think the reason it may not have been raised is because the applicant said that they were going to do it in sweat, but I just want to just straighten the record with respect to that it was a mitigation of environmental issues. Actually, if it was a mitigation of environmental issues, there could be an argument they have to proceed, but it wasn't a mitigation of environmental issues according to negative. It was raised as a...
Is that drinking, man, I read?
It seems like they're a little bit...
All right.
Hold on a second.
Well, as far as the fact that the other developers no longer here, and it was so hard, fast, that nothing could go forward because of the environmental issue, that coming off Winter Circle, coming off Breeze Way, is not a risk.
Well, the way that would shake out...
No, I think that's right. I mean, he is right. I mean, there was a lot of people that did not want traffic, and it was quality of life. I mean, that's what I'm referring to.
But is that a legitimate thing? I mean, it's a, it's a discomfort, it's, it's an impact.
But the reality is a legitimate thing, I mean, you know, dead end roads getting extended.
The Breeze Way project, the Breeze Way project wasn't even completed at that time, so that Breeze Way was still enjoying traffic and leaveless for a portion of that development too, so, I mean, every road is going to purr traffic as long as it's being built out, and people move in and still have to contend with it no matter what development they go into, so, I mean, I don't know how you can avoid that.
No, and I think, I think it's also, people also don't in a way know. I think if you're giving a weekend where it's going to be so unquiet and...
What happens when the board passes, you know, if that, that could be, you know, later on, things, then the conditions change, is that, help me have some flexibility to modify them.
Well, the answer to that question is yes. Any restriction that the planning board puts on is not otherwise dictated by environmental requirement, is in there, and applicant for subsequent purpose has the right to come back and ask for that to be rebuilt, right, the right to come back to the board and ask for that to be modified. But I'm saying you don't have that right. What will happen is that the board has to consider the issue. They obviously have great discretion. If the court looks at it, they would only overturn this board's expression if they found an arbitrary increase. So that's, so they have great leeway, but if in fact, they have no good reason to require it, the court could say it's arbitrary, if they have good reasons to, valid reasons, good just reasons underlying their decision, then that would not be considered arbitrary. And I think that's exactly what the board's problem is.
Again, I'm going to now, I'm going to go to the board and get some opinions, but as I stated before, I don't have a problem with the suggestion of using heavy construction on the farm road and then bringing it in from the two other places. I would ask Sean to revisit the, the bond issue, but to take in consideration our concern that the town can be covered through that process, and see if the applicant, if he comes up with a bond that can be, to the acceptance of the applicant. I would be comfortable with that, and that, but that's where I would go. I still feel strongly about that bond being, and again, maybe he can get it closer to what you guys are living, or willing to live with, or it's fine, but I would still want it to be contingent upon him being comfortable with the level of bond. Yes, Gus?
I can just raise one other issue that was just very tricky about other town roads that people have to go on to get to a construction site. I think what Neil was talking about before is that we have the regular town roads that are used for this purpose all the time, but then there are these subdivision roads that aren't used for this purpose all the time, where we do, extent that we all, extent that we also want to have interactivity, and that means that it sort of are connected in the site. But I think the, the difference that may exist, and I don't know that it does, from comments you said earlier, is that we're not sure exactly of what standard that subdivision road was built. For instance, if that subdivision road wasn't built with the same standard as a town highway bus, that has some impact. The trouble is, we don't know.
They could do a test drive, test build, find out what those roads are.
So maybe there's something to it, and maybe that plays into the level of the bond determination. Anyway, that's where I, Neil.
Just one question, just one comment on the noise question. Special position number one, or specific condition number one, let's say that there shall be no site work on Saturdays and Sundays unless it complies with the code. So we did, we did at that point in time, look at no site work on Saturdays and Sundays as a, as condition, because of the noise level, so to some degree, that noise issue has been running around the conditions of, because I don't...
That was noise, that wasn't traffic.
Yeah.
No, no, it's noise.
That was noise, I remember it was for noise, but it wasn't for traffic, and I will tell you, I, again, once you start building a subdivision, delivery, it's going to be a real inconvenience not to be able to get a delivery on Saturday or Sunday if something is needed, so, I mean, that's, I mean, again, that can be your intent, that can be what you want, but reality is, you know, if someone couldn't get there on Friday because of some other reason, and you had to have it, or it was stopping your crews on Saturday, that truck's going to show up on Saturday, you know?
We had one other thing, as the town was the one, we did get, you know, the state housing dropped away, you know, two times, and so, and we did succeed, we established additional, extra time, but we've been at this for a while, you know, we started to approach that, and however it ends up, we really need to...
I understand, so what do you want to, I mean, I told you where I am, Lee, what do you think?
My position, as before, I have no problem with the split use of the roads as proposed. Have the equipment going up the farm road, regular construction up the, you know, the town roads, but I do want to see some sort of protection. It's something I wanted right from the start, my biggest issue was knowing the roads, the condition of the watch, when the weather and that, whether it's got to be a bond that's extensive, it's rebuilding the whole road, no, it should be, it should be a shared cost with the town, obviously, when the time comes to rebuild it, or resurface or whatever needs to be done, but I do feel there should be one of those.
So that's a positive, right?
Taking the positive. Okay. Okay.
I guess I'm, you know, in congruence with the alternative. You know, I would have to defer to the engineer in terms of cost of the bond, if it was an appropriate amount. I imagine it can be a compromise though, being that, again, the heaviest traffic would, you know, be going on there, so the risk is reduced.
Okay, Ren?
I go along with what Lee said. I think it gets you nailed.
Is that to your line?
I think I agree generally with what Lee and Reni have said. I just, I'm struggling with the whole bond thing. You know, if the applicant is willing to prove that, or can prove that these two roads are built to the same standard as Maple Avenue and Houston Road, you know, other town roads, then, you know, I don't, I'm not a real staunch advocate that the town needs a bond for it, but, you know, we're all in agreement that, we feel strongly, I'm not that set against it either. You know, I don't, I don't know what an appropriate bond would be. I think I would have to, you know, I think the engineers should kind of figure, figure that out, but I think I generally agree with Lee.
I'm basically, I, I agree. The only thing I was wondering is, if they got a section of houses built, this might be stupid, but isn't there a way if they got one side done that the other side could get moved on back or something? Is that a stupid question?
Find out if there's a question between, well, this question is, like, as far as kind of, you know, is it, is it, you know, something like this?
Well, and the site's going to be constructed, I mean, the subdivision is going to be constructed over a period of time, so it is going to deteriorate over time anyway naturally, without the.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I mean.
Gets, that's why the bond gets kind of sketchy.
Right, I think you can park that out. Okay, John?
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is only logical about the construction used for all the heavy equipment that's going to come up there and any heavy moving of the dirt, other than just site preparation of the houses. I think though, as you said, that we need a realistic policy that reflects the current realities here, and so the town is particularly taken to the concerns of the reevers that are doing this. One concern I have is though, obviously there's a discrepancy in the bond amounts with two roads, and we really don't know what, how those roads were constructed at this point. I would hate to see this, this project go on for seven, eight, 10 years and have all the, all the traffic deliveries come in from one road, either Breeze Way or all coming off of Winter Circle, because that's, you know, financially they make more sense to bond that, but, you know, the people that are there, they very rarely disapprove of that sort of trajectory.
Goss?
If the board determines to modify, that's a good condition. Up to right now, everybody is, has, we're talking about, well, as long as the heavy construction goes up here and the stuff is going through the subdivision, in order for it not to be enforced to take that, we need to define what heavy construction is, by tonnage, what Sean was saying, also by heavy tonnage of construction as to what equipment will come before certain construction stays, et cetera. But that has to, I think, be carefully considered. Sean can, we need to do something right now to give more consideration to modify.
Can you propose that as you put together the bond?
I think in terms of the schedule, that's pretty much settled. Discuss the idea of when a, we need base course for, in terms of the tonnage, I'd like to consult the highest of.
All right, so let's work that out at the same time, let's see what we come up with. Again, make a recommendation of a, of a form as well as an amount of bond and see if there's something we can come up with that can give some relief, you know, maybe we, maybe we can get to something where we can set standards here for a maintenance bond and we can use it forever and it'd be a wonderful field with things. But I understand the difficulty in it now, and, but let's try and let's see if we can get, because I, I feel strongly, and I heard everybody, except for the exception of one individual, say that, say that some form of bond, some form of financial protection for the town is important. So we'll see what we can come up with and see if we can get something to agree. I think the alternative probably makes sense and hopefully it'll give you some relief and allow you to go forward, but at the same time, I, I think you heard the board feeling that we have an obligation to get the, the down.
We were hearing, you know, we know a number, but we were hearing, by using the road for extra, Winter Circle and Breeze Way for all construction, you know, just doing bond now is a high. When we change it partly, when we move the board, when we change the setting, we use the farm road, the road, you know, the heavy construction, we expect the bond to be much smaller.
Well, I think, I think it'll probably be adjusted somehow, so let's, let's see what we can come up with.
The idea that you're holding the road, there's got to be other maintenance plans that's helpful.
I don't have a problem giving you consideration for the tonnage.
It's the same.
I had a, I had a feeling that, when I saw Point of Absurdity, and then I looked at the end and I went, Michael Donnelly, there's no way Michael came up with Point of Absurdity. So I pretty much put that one on you, Mr. Fine, from the minute already.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, I would suggest that the applicant submit something, they have our idea of what the bond should be. They submit something and discuss it at the step.
Okay, did you hear that? Okay, so you guys took a shot at it, what you're thinking and where we are, and then they'll pick it up and begin that process, all right? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your information.
Okay, next item on the agenda is heritage. Where the heck is that? 49.76 acres located on Old Chester Road, Brookside Drive, and nature R U zone, and NQ 6, AQ 3, scenic roads, stream, and reservoir overlay. We're reviewing the conditions.
You were absolutely right about the phone calls. Heritage were out there and probably cut down 30 or 40 trees this past week, past week or the week before, and we had phone calls and people started to the office for that. That, that there's anything wrong, but you're.
Told you.
Yes, you're right.
Okay, councilors? Year of condition people?
Yes, we're going to get set here. But before we jump into the condition, we'll talk generally about a couple things. One, we tried to work through these things, I understand that you didn't, but nobody got the draft of the proposed revised resolution with the conditions in full today, because it turned into a much larger task than we anticipated and expected to, with various considerations that people had trying to reconcile those and justify those. Kelly worked hard on it, and she also proposed one on Monday, I was tied up on Tuesday and Wednesday, so I can get Kelly to finalize this. It was part of the process, I thought, we could have assumed. The other thing, we need to address another very important point, and that is whether or not we're simply working, this is more, our time directly, whether or not we're really just working through, trying to resolve some of these conditions, working toward the submission of a final plat, or whether you consider your March 17th submission a final plat submission. And the reason I bring this up is that under state law, once you submit your final plat, we are then into a default period where we actually have to make a decision within 62 days of them submitting a final plat, or they get default approval, which is obviously something we're not willing to allow happen. So if in fact they consider that to be a final plat, we know that, we'll set up a 62 day timeframe, and you will make a decision one way or the other within the 62 days unless they say that they're willing to extend that 62 days period. Or if we're not, you have not filed a final plat and right now you're simply working with the board to try to reduce the number of conditions before you file your final plat, and we're on a note time constraint with respect to the 62 day. So my question is, was your March 17th filing, the final plat filing, we looked at the plants themselves, and they do not indicate that it's a final plat, but I didn't want to have to argue about this after that. And you're arguing against the default approval and we're arguing they didn't. So let's try to clarify it at this point.
Of course. No, the goal, and just back up for a bit, one of the things that we're working, there's two, actually, there's really one, a couple of big items that are out there that are really in the perky town board, and really have been sort of, you know, with regard to the status of the projects, you know, we receive our joint, our joint commitment, we have our joint commitment with D C, it's less than, so because we're going to take the one that is sort of the SWIP and all that stuff, that's all done. We've been before the health department, better directly review for the distribution system to help the partner, we'll carefully get that back in. But there's an alternative to the border system that we're working with, really, and the town board, you know, we don't really want to submit until we get some resolution to that. We're hoping that's going to happen quickly because we need better resources to maintain our, our schedule. Holding the bigger infrastructure issue aside, we're trying to get rid of a lot of these. The goal here is to get our 67 or 68 conditions. So we're moving ahead to the final plat submission. So I understand that the town board is going to take action on April 11th, that we need them to do, in the judgment period, on formation or extension, either for a, or a border issue, that he will take for us, that happens, that we don't, that probably we'll find one of our, our, they tend to move on. So we're here tonight, really, our last time we were here, we went through many conditions because we had a workshop, which was for the conditions, we made the changes of drawing, we also, you know, added a lot of math notes, cleanup, so we're here again, I believe the last time, workshop, we had, perhaps another dozen or so, we have another 17 items that really require board approval, you know, like in the, the board action, I should say, that we're really, you know, off the list. So our, the resolution that, the resolution that Kelly was literally on, that's about 24 pages, and our goal is that, and tonight, we're making that happen in 25 pages.
So to make it a little more tippy, you have not yet filed your final plat. That is correct.
Okay. But we're close.
Well, that's fine. I think when that happens, first of all, I think that it would be helpful for you guys to title it as a final plat and also have a cover letter, making very clear for everybody that you're at that stage, because there are important deadlines.
What do you think, you're going to have the math school have final, our cover letter will, will indicate that there is a final submission, and you will also have to associate final application.
Okay.
Okay, shall we begin?
Yes. And we went through Kelly person in 79 today. We went basically through the entire resolution on many, many of these conditions. So I'm not quite sure which of the 17 we want to be pressed for. It may be helpful for the applicant to, as they did last time, start with a condition number and then move forward. Now, the condition numbers have changed in the most recent submissions, but we've actually eliminated quite a number of conditions. So I think the board just needs to take a deep breath when a condition is, number is noted, and so we all are clear as to which condition number it is, if we're all, all should be looking on the same document. So I think it would be helpful if we're all looking on the April 7th document, the one that was transmitted today, if people don't have that, we will, we have to score after how we see it.
And in the condition, in the forenancy, right after this number, is the number that it works in the original?
Do we need any more? Because I can, I can pick it up upstairs and.
You got it?
All right, we're good, we're good.
Okay. I'm going to take 15 minutes.
Before we start, there's one thing I have to, got to add before, I'll put, maybe like, we've got to, we've got to work side of the construction.
Are you not sure you're?
No.
Are you wearing that?
No.
I'd heard you wore it, but I've also heard others, I don't believe any of you know.
Kelly had mentioned, but I know we were passing around things, kind of, I've never heard. In the April 7th version, we had the condition numbers, starting on page nine, specific conditions. And then you will see, next to the number there, is a number in front. That's the prior version, the specific condition number, for example. Specific condition number one now, used to be number two, right? Because we eliminated number one, so that one became number two. So if you're trying to think about it, for some reason you have made notes, possibly, on the old one, just to give you that cross-reference. So that we can be clear as to what was discussed last time.
Kelly, is this, or wait, is this draft strictly because it's a draft of final approval resolution?
Yes, it's, it's a draft of the final resolution subject to, from drafts.
Okay, so there, I mean.
The last one that we looked at was also a draft of the final resolution, and it had lots of conditions.
We're not getting to final resolution.
Was it, no, I understand that, I understand that, but was there a, I don't even know what I want to have, was there a?
There was a preliminary approval.
Was there, there was a preliminary approval with conditions, and there was a resolution that went along with that?
Yeah.
Correct?
And then there was.
So that, that resolution is, that approved, that resolution that went along with the preliminary approval is the starting point of this draft?
Yes. And they are allowed, and they are, they can ask for a final, final approval, which basically gets rid of all conditions that have to be done prior to final approval. I don't know if somebody's made this prior to, so, conditions that are going to be done later on.
Correct.
But they want to get, before they get final, final, they have to get rid of all of the prior to final approvals that have to be, plus there are other codes required. They can also however, ask you to approve a conditional final approval. So you still have some of those conditions on there. And really what thereafter is to, I think, come up with a conditional final approval, but with fewer conditions.
Correct. Makes sense.
Second thing.
Second.
Second, two zone first. Okay, second. Okay, the first one you want to talk Okay, the first one you want to talk about is number?
I think number one.
Sorry. I was so hoping it wasn't. Number, number.
Maybe it's just that I don't understand. But we have to deal with this, get to know what name comes out of the plan. If it is, you got to have.
Number one basically says that you are required to have all state and federal permits in place before we sign off on the project. And you say you have.
You submit those?
And we have.
They weren't in the medical report.
Remember that.
And I think it would be helpful going forward, if you're trying to satisfy a condition by some condition that you, the cover letter says instead, for instance, here are the approvals of the federal state, please, you believe that this satisfies condition of four. And in that way, it makes things a lot easier to separate and look in rather than taking just some other corresponding factor.
I'm actually going to put together.
That would be correct.
And I think this is one that pretty much stays on the, the substantial final approval case, if you didn't get a final notice, like one that was fired.
Okay, the next one.
It was old number?
Now number four. All conservation easements proposed at the time of final approval?
Were, they were submitted and a lot of them. My, one of the questions that I had to, to the technical representative, nine seven twenty-one, that the preservation of open space, where it said that it has to form in the same group or in the, in the, in the finding, this board may, or this may, that finding, so I don't know.
Let's assume that the statement is correct, I doubt it at all. But all this says is that those easements must be drafted according to those names prior to the final approval. So this will be, they have to be in such form above such as that second term. So the time of coming is signed off. As far as management, as a past practice, will ask us to, you get into the recommendation that our recommendation is, out of thirty thousand, that yes, the conservation easements are, everything is satisfied, I don't know that it's, but I can take, then take out.
But I did pull those questions around.
Final landscape plan and spading, formerly six.
Now, actually, that was something that, three years ago, there was, gotten that disboard saying that this is on one seventh, and said that condition number now five, who will landscape plan will be discussed at the March eleventh, that meeting is before the April seventh planning board's decision. But I don't know that we have the.
Yes, the plan is.
So you consider that to be final plan?
Well, one of two things. I mean, I don't know why we referenced landscape plan versus rating plan versus, or, or plan. So we're just saying, you either approve a plan, so you can take a condition map, or take a condition map, you have to prove the plan. It was trending.
Well, I think Ed has been commenting last year.
He did, yeah. I was looking at his report, we reviewed it and it worked.
I had a couple of questions on this section here. One is the, the shade trees have, is, is what's on the plan equal to only one tree for a thousand square feet of floor area? Because we have it on our calculation. I know that's in the code, but I thought that was in the code relative to.
Site plan, type to site.
All primary.
Well, I do that, to the code, to the section that refers to site plan, especially.
Not to the street trees.
Street trees are forty foot on center.
Right. So this.
Which is that was on.
This is for the balance of the landscape.
Correct.
And what about the recycled water? It indicates that you're going to have drip irrigation from recycled water.
If we're going to do, if we're going to do irrigation, it had to be done with, so we didn't want to.
This was something that was in the.
That's probably.
Recycled.
And the board did it prior to, domestic water, we need, but we, we, we.
I think it's, I'm not dealing with something. I felt before, we got that, that. they believe we need the code, and they're providing certain amount of landscaping trees, that's all shown on the, on the plan. And so they basically say, just confirm that it's according to the code and you're happy with it, and then move on, take this out because the department might have to move on with the next, so I mean, some kind of determination, in fact, that review has been done. And then, you would normally get a recommendation from a consultant who would expect to that, and then you have this question to question it, and then make the determination. Ed, are you saying that they are or are not, or you're unsure as to whether or not they're code compliant with their landscape? And most of these dealing with the shade trees and with, even the one thousand square feet of floor area, that, those are all just taking right as the code requirements.
Right.
So the question is, do they comply with the code, with the plan that they have right now?
From what I, yes, from what I've seen, I believe it does. But I don't know, this would indicate that there's supposed to be about a hundred and fifty-four trees, no more than that, assuming there are two thousand square feet perhaps.
Well, what, the way I read this is very odd, and this language is the exact language in Stanford, Old Lake, Rayleigh, quite frankly, it's very odd language, just like how much you should plant. It simply says that you can't require a plan more than this, but doesn't say that they, you can't prove something, it says, if you wanted more than one shade tree for one thousand square feet of floor area, you could do it. But it doesn't say that there's a limit. So I think that we need to, moment this, less than a thousand, you know, one shade tree for a thousand square feet, that actually comply with the code. The question is, do you believe that that's bad with what they provide?
There's forty feet on center.
Well, there, that's, that's.
That's the, that's the street tree zone.
What, you?
I was going to say, yeah. On the interior road of the subdivision, it is required to be one tree for every forty feet. That's what we always look at. This, this picture of code, I think we're talking about is would we for a long old Chester Road.
Okay.
Well, we're quoting over two hundred trees, just in the cluster itself, so I think we're good there, I said, with what, a hundred and fifty? Forty foot on center, for the exception of where we have snow areas, we figured with the street, we have a lot of that. The scenic road requirement is that we, we have to keep, you can't build anything, if you build anything, then it's five hundred feet, so just when you build it all, you can go, which has, that, you have, have to, we have one residential, four hundred, you weigh. And everything else is well over five hundred feet, but we have to continue, especially in the block, over the exit, that is made up of vegetation, streets, roads, and grass. That also.
Okay, but you're saying that that fulfills the landscape plan, it is in compliance? So if it's in compliance, is there any reason to have this stuff in there?
What's that requires compliance with? What, what?
No, we're still on the last sentence, the final landscape plan should be in compliance with the zoning code, the food plan work prior to the time over.
Now, that's where I had a question with Steve. We indicated that based on the boxwoods that were going to be planted in front of the sign, you wouldn't see the sign. So, so either the sign has to be raised, which I think is a logical thing to do, or you eliminate the shrubs and cuts, which is probably not what you want to do.
He is raising the sign, you got a problem? Uh, well, he is really going to have it.
I was thinking. It's what time. It's good, it's never been near. But it's, the ground plan is five, it's five and sixty.
In scrub?
Raise that a little bit.
The ones that spread along the bottom, not very good at all. Okay, so you're going to modify the, modify the plant that you've done to the sign and not raise.
But the code part isn't the, the stone wall or planting, that's what.
Right. So the sign is in compliance.
But it, basically, the final site is planned, is in compliance with the code. However, you've got to be able to read the sign.
Okay, so he's willing to modify the plants underneath, the planting's underneath, he'll go with some small ground coverage scenario, something that's not a three, four foot high shrub.
So in the final plan, presumably, that would be modified to address, that concern.
Okay, so modify that now and take it out, okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention something that was discussed with Anthony, the board side. The sign is planned, there was some confusion with regard to that, and stop sign, and I'm surprised that it's not that, that's other, I think, in the context, like, that there's no legal, sign, sensitive, sign, designing this, but, the plans do not, almost given access, and they're not, they're just, stop signs.
Stop signs, the streets lines, or other.
They are. Stop bars and stuff.
Steve, but that wasn't a requirement of number five.
No sign, like the square footage of sign.
Okay, so, if I have it right, you now say that they are in compliance with number five, with the exception of changing one little shrub height.
The sign.
And that has nothing to do with it. That's something they're going to do, but it really has nothing to do with the signage plan, that shrub has nothing to do with the signage plan. And that isn't a violation of the final landscape plan, spading, etc. So five, do you now agree is in compliance?
Yes.
Mine is that last seven.
Sign, the sign detail is bound.
And Sean just said that that does not apply, that only applies to the sign at the entrance, it does not, if, the signage plan does not talk about stop signs or any of the other.
The plan, the detail on the plan do not need stop signs, and it has.
Hasn't been there, but that's not, it doesn't fall under signage plan definition.
Correct.
So they are now in compliance with. Jordan, give a.
And in addition to that, the board, similar rules, some of the conditions, you're clear, you know, we can get out, that this board is satisfied with the final landscape plan.
That's what we just heard. So final landscape plan is in compliance?
Well, it's applied to the code, but the board is satisfied with the final landscape plan.
It, from a plan that has to be, oh, you can finally submit it, right?
Oh, it hasn't.
It's the one that's been there forever, not changed, they're not changed, not changed at all.
The only thing is, when Dennis, our, when Dennis, we're, we're going to do some mitigation last this time, that's.
That's, that's.
Yeah, I don't know if that has to actually be part of this or.
Doesn't have to be part of the landscape.
Okay, fine.
I mean, they can eventually put it on the landscape plan if they want to, but I think, the critical part that I would like to get, if the board is available, you know, the hurdle of, that the landscape plan is now found out that it's code compliant, and the question is, at the moment, you're satisfied with it, you can put that behind us and not have to bring this event in, respect the landscape plan, and we can also eliminate the large error. Because I was saying, just the most of half a page.
Because we can take out, um, number five, that we take out five.
Yes. F, we are, are we saying that we are in agreement with the landscape, that we find it acceptable, yes?
I find it acceptable.
Yes, John? Yes, if you're, yes, Lynn, yes?
Link.
Okay, yeah, we are. Five's gone. All the others seem to go on the spot. Number eight, formerly nine?
Yes, eight and formerly nine.
The last time we were here, we agreed that we're going to let intersection, in the main area, so.
The common.
The common. So what we did is, in the main boulevard and the high, high intersection, we're going to have, we're going to have five, that's the main intersection. And then we had the first turnaround, we ran it out, we have to also let, and we had light at each intersection. And we also, it turns out, not having to play it back here, because we have our pump station here, and, so, we don't have, there's, we're about, shine, we have lights in the corner, so we have lights here, lights here, intersection, intersection, we put a light here, and then also have lights in the interior of the common, so that's, that's.
Yeah, the wording of, of this particular resolution was, was like Mark Raymond last time, but we did not, Kelly, no, I did not go ahead and compare this.
We did not, hell, no, I did not go ahead and compare this with your plan, and that's why you, you agree that the plan's actually apply with this, with how it's being done.
The entrances, yes, right, the seven intersections, yes, around the central common area, yes, consisting of no less than five lights, those here in town.
Oh.
There you go, okay, more than five. Uh, subject to the satisfaction of the town engineer?
We, I, I haven't seen you in detail yet, frankly. Is it missing?
Yes. And further lower reflection windows must be moved through the inspection of the residence, and not clear to the off-site presence.
That would be a condition that, that, that last.
Well, I just, we'll have a whole plan, so, I don't think we can, we can answer this plan, which is on. A lot of us would think that, that's now on a plan though. But we'll, we'll confirm that, and, and what we can do with respect to condition number eight, check the plan though, and if shown upon review, and acceptable, um, it can then be taken.
Okay, so I agree. Okay, next, number twenty-one?
I wish, there's. So is that, is that whole condition coming out?
If you confirm that.
Yeah, if he agrees.
So he has to agree on both things. No, Sean is going to agree on everything but the last sentence, and we just have to, well, either us or Sean.
Find the note.
Find the draw. Confirm that the note is on. Plan, uh, when we're doing, and note number thirty-two.
And next, number is thirteen?
Both thirteen, yes.
Yeah, thirteen, flat notation must include specifying the maximum bedroom count on each of the locks. Thirteen, top of page on page fourteen. Okay, explain.
Um, that one, we're hoping to put a map on. Well, what we're going to do with that is, I spoke to him about this, Steve, the building inspector, he was like, we're starting to determine, because we don't know which locks will be three bedrooms, four bedrooms, come select the home. So we'll still, if you have a chart, then we'll track, and we'll say which, which have, which locks have dependent count, we, how many, we have four, how many three, and then you'll have to track that through the results.
We, we can do that if you want, still. I think there's, I think you're right that it's very difficult to pick out which houses are going to want to be, which, which number bedrooms, but that's your call, and I would just organize the liability. I think we have a limited, we have a total overall limit, I mean, bedroom cabinet, it is weird.
I don't know if it's exactly, but.
Some of the, she, first sheet, yes, yes. But twenty-seven, three bedrooms, or something else.
Yeah, it's, that's number twenty-two.
So it is the sign, how many there were, that can't change.
No matter where they go all the way.
Okay, but where they're, all right.
Essentially, the market.
It's, it's, we'll be, I'll, they, they, they're right.
Yeah, that does, that does make sense.
Is there a possibility that, you know, the first, you know, fifteen picks higher bedroom count, so then, no one else really wants a two bedroom? It's hard to say, because it could be twelve months out, and someone, you know, someone may say, I like this lot, and I want a three bedroom house here.
Now, what he's saying is, is there a chance that, what is it called, for twenty-seven three bedrooms and?
Forty-eight.
And forty-eight, what, four bedrooms?
Four bedrooms.
Okay, what he's saying is, what if thirty people come up on three bedrooms?
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, well, say, say fifty people come up on four bedrooms.
Right, right. So we can't handle, but if someone, if there's more threes, that would be fine.
But it, but it is restricted, uh, that you can't.
Right, and, and Steve said, something to point out, and I'm serious, and why we have to, and it was tied in, it's very important, to decide if there's more. Um, so, but we also can't get to a situation, which is what the board are getting to, is that, yeah, only hide down at the beginning, so you run out of the count, and then you just have lots that theoretically can't put a house on, because you've already run out of your bedroom numbers. And that poses all sorts of problems, and you expect you to just let it go for taxes and. Well, no, it wouldn't be, that the maximum bedrooms you could add in a house is four, and minimum would be three, but you can't have, I could have seventy-five four.
What?
You cannot have seventy-five four bedroom house.
Right.
But, um, we could have sixty-three bedroom house, and fifteen, hopefully.
Or sixty-three bedroom house.
Sixty-three bedroom house.
Sixty-three.
Why come a lot? Um, so, I mean, it's, it's lots, like, no one's going to walk away from a lot, because there's no one in a three bedroom house. No, I'm, I'm concerned that you use it all up, so they can't build them, that lot, because you have so many things.
Well, actually, we're not, uh, based under the, uh, corporate common, where the lot's very common, but three bedrooms, they're already available, like, the market, those sorts of, like, doing here, some, some, some tax exposure, you know, making, or, or, you're going to see that, uh, like, I don't doubt that, but we're, we're, we're dealing with different issues.
Right, but, but. I think forty-eight four bedrooms.
Forty-eight four bedroom homes, and it's maximum, number four bedroom, we're not going to, we're not looking at five bedroom homes.
Okay, so, you'll just have to keep track of forty-eight, and once you get into forty-eight, you can't have any more.
You can only sell three bedroom homes, if that's what you're.
But we're going to market it where, obviously, three bedroom homes are a little bit less your, than four bedroom homes, and we're going to, if we're marketing properly, because we don't want to end up in a situation where.
It affects us nothing, but.
Exactly.
Okay.
What is the second part of this condition about the deed restrictions? Restricting future accessory dwellings?
So they couldn't have a separate housing on the lot?
Yeah, we have.
Or, or an addition, like a mother daughter.
Yeah, we have.
Again, it's though the, tied to the, the water, we have a.
No, I understand, I understand it.
So it's, all we have to do, that portion of it, what happens is, is that they have to submit deed restrictions that would apply to this before this gets limited, and we would, um, look at that, make sure it's fine, in these larger developments, where there's going to be actually a lot of different deed restrictions, um, what happens many times, instead of having fifteen or sixteen different deed restrictions of different types, they can combine them all into sort of a non plus deed restriction, where all the lots have deed issues on it, the title search, it does the title search, and it comes across a very large, forty-page deed restriction, most of which will not have anything to do with it, within, within the homeowner, some will, and they're going to be unknown, since they have it applied.
Okay, so, you getting rid of anything with this? We got rid of the first part, about the plot?
No, this, this, we don't need any class notification, that's fine, actually, bedrooms, like, the rest of it, so.
We did actually know, uh, expression on.
What, you're submitted? We've done a lot, yeah, but, that's, that's a little different, actually, the issue is, is great plus, and, and, we thought that it was actually settled, where if something is on the map note, people are going to be bound by that. There, in the case that was just decided, um, telecourt, and said something different, and it has now, we're trying to be, I was, I was, we're trying to deal that out to the quarter, so we have to deal with that, can't just say, well, it's on the class.
Okay, so that one will be, next one?
What?
Last one?
Eighty percent, it used to be eight, so when I pulled out the, my notes, my stat includes, that's the FDIF in the filing, so I pulled that out, I think, where the basins had been, on the number of thousands, it was just, that was where the eighty percent came in, and there was support on, so.
Actually, uh, root on the, uh.
Uh, I don't know that I, I have to.
Oh, our, is the map, um, show that if the combination of base, one, seven, uh, that comp, that is totally set, base deep, I had, in fact, uh, was it base deep?
I, I, whatever, I'm just going to do that one, and I'm going to do that.
Okay. So that one's clear? That one's fine, next? That one's okay. Eighteen, formerly twenty-one easements over the stormwater infrastructure in Greenwich Facilities, that's the offer in favor of the town.
Well, it's another one of those, you need to review, and prove more, and, and follow.
Hey, do you hear that, guys?
No, we had to, what I want to do, is, uh, some of the language, and start it here, quickly. But I wanted to note on, whenever it is given, it's made, very clear whether it has to be done prior to final, final. They were slight, they're making that, but now, which one are we on?
Eighteen, they want you to review the easements, and say that you reviewed them, and if you can, then go away.
Maybe we'll go ahead.
We submitted any, we got, yeah.
Well, can we do this, if they're okay, then, some of the, the last team plan, that's this particular easement, easements are okay, to just state this condition.
Should we take that?
Well, no, this homeowners associations are historically done by, great, so, um.
I, I don't think it's asking, um, who in the, this is separate issue, that's, or, each way is saying that we have to provide the easements to the town.
We can review the number by our, like, you know. You're only talking about the first.
Well, I'm talking about any of these that have to do with deed restrictions, covenants, agneasements, the office dedication, they're okay, we would like to just, I would like to say, we can fill that requirement, we can fill that condition.
As you said, some of these, we re-. The last sentence, was saying that the HOA documents, what the plan, that such infrastructure is adequately constructed, prepared to maintain, I'm not quite sure how that's going to, actually, happen.
And that's incorrect, that actually, not, we're speaking, no, this is definitely an awful, infrastructure.
Yeah.
You don't want the homeowners, it's, it's.
They're supposed to maintain it, and the town actually goes in to maintain it.
That's, that, that condition's only stormwater.
Stormwater.
Just for storm.
Not like the drain water.
Yeah, that's, that's what we want, I was talking about, stormwater infrastructure, drainage, so.
For the twenty-two.
Is it stormwater infrastructure drainage?
Let's, let's, we'll take a look at this.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay. Because I'm, I'm not sure, in this format, makes a lot of sense, um, so I think we have to.
But.
These, so.
Need to, right. All right, ventilation system, which is, so.
I think there were two separate conditions for stormwater infrastructure in the basins, for some reason, they're separating, and since they were operating separately.
I think the consultants, both sides can try to.
I need some help here, again, remind me, remind me of something. What we're doing is going through, and saying that we agree, they're already done, so we can take them off, so they don't get placed into the resolution. All right, that's why we're doing it. What additional burden does this place on the applicant, if they're already done, they're already in compliance, why are we going through this exercise again? And I, and I know there was a good reason, or we wouldn't have been doing it this long, but for some reason, this just seems so repetitive right now to me, and I don't see what we're accomplishing. I mean, if you're cleaning up where, like this one, where the wording is wrong, and it should be, then that's fine, we're getting the conditions appropriate. But why are we eliminating things on here by saying that, okay, they're already done? What difference does it matter if they're already done, if they're in the resolution or not in the resolution? If they've already done them, they don't have to redo them again as part of the resolution. What's the value of doing what we're doing again?
Just to make, uh, two, two, can I just, just, a couple of reasons. One is, and I'll use the shape, the final shape, the basis, I mean, that's, that was the condition, this board had to approve, the final shape, the basis.
Right, but some of these on, but.
But, but, Ralph was talking, for instance, the one we're dealing with, the easements, that have to be subject to our approval.
Right.
Whether it's in there, we approve it, and it still stays in there, doesn't really matter.
No, but we want, we want, we want you to, we, we just, this thing, we, we need to get through these things.
Right.
That's what we want, we want somebody to say, yep, that easement's okay. Yep, that, the shape of this thing is okay, yep, this, this.
Okay, it's just, we've never done this in the past, we've never gone through the conditions and said, okay, this one is kind of compliant, this one is met.
I think problem, the, the reason we're doing it now is that we typically don't have this many conditions, and I think one of the reasons, said it, is, it was this way, is that the applicant wanted, because of the circumstances at the time, I think, with zoning and everything else, wanted an approval as quickly as possible, and it meant that some of these things weren't resolved ahead of time, before, before preliminary approval, so that they have a right to ask for, you have to give it to them. But I think it had a lot to do with working through the new zoning, and, and they said, well, we want approval now, because that may secure our rights, and if we wait to resolve some of these things, we may not be, maybe subject to different.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, when I looked around and asked a couple of the members, why are we doing this, they went, I have no idea. So I just needed to hear it again, because it's beginning not to make a lot of sense to me, on someone.
As a practice, we should not be having this many conditions, and therefore, we need to, so. Twenty-two is the next one, please?
Yes.
The issue here, I think, again, we'll deal with the easement issue, but the one issue that we want to deal with, or, we need to adjust, if the applicant wants to adjust, is that it says here that, um, have offered a twenty-five foot easement along, and on both sides of the center line of Old Chester Road, by side, I think, the applicant's tax parcel, um, has been to the lease, so the able to provide the easement along one side of Old Chester Road, not both sides, I assume that's what you're calling it.
Correct.
Which?
Can't provide, it's a logical law, so, yeah.
So we'll put it on the owner's side.
On the owner's side.
What, what side is your, you know, east, west, or north?
North, east side. All right, okay. Can we just go back to that for a second?
Sure.
The, the whole fifty foot, that is going to be on one side, or just twenty-five?
Twenty-five from the center. So we're going twenty-five from the sideline here, twenty-five here, they can only do twenty-five.
So that means if you're making... And then, don't you need 50 foot total easements if they're going to expand the roads or something, or build the roads wider? Isn't that what's the issue to provide? And the need for that is what?
Well, 50 foot is, if you don't use that 50 foot wide roads.
Easy.
Yeah, the easement is that way to allow you to have expansion of the road, and enough room to do whatever maintenance the municipality wants on that. And that's, it's a good thing, and in fact, if they own both sides, we'd require them to give up the 25 foot on the other side. The thing is, you can't require an applicant to offer somebody else property.
No, I was saying, why don't we ask for 50 feet on their side?
The other side? I, that, this is on a road, right?
Yes, from the centerline, it's not expensive.
Yeah, so I, it would be so bizarre to have 50, you'd actually have a job.
You couldn't...
I don't think it would be safe.
Under... All right, what's the next one?
Twenty-five.
There was a well monitoring protocol I thought, and you wanted to keep it out.
Actually, we wanted to talk about 24.
Okay.
So we just say that the ag easement is okay, but you guys, that's okay?
What is it? What does it say? It's standard for all these agricultural easements.
Tell them, you have any will review them?
No. A whole group document, so I'm not yet reviewed. But I know one of them was the agricultural buildings, and Neil had some questions on the idea, and if they restricted agricultural housing. And we don't believe that as proposed, they restricts agricultural housing, they restricts constructing buildings, but not...
On agricultural property, you have the right to put up agricultural housing for workers. And on house and road, when we did that subgenere, we picked a certain spot where this is where you can put your buildings. And I think we're really looking in terms of residential buildings as opposed to saying you can't put running sheds somewhere else. But my concern is that, and it's not planned by the applicant, but if we have this agricultural easement, this big property, if somebody wants to put a mobile home up there for agricultural health, they can put it anywhere on the property that has an agricultural easement. That includes anywhere along the road, along Hope Road, or anywhere. I think you may want to consider restricting that to a certain area on there, a five acre area, whatever you want to do.
It's your call, I see.
Yeah, this is not one that I think can easily be taken out. I think that when we look at it, we're going to make a recommendation for Neil to the board, and the board will then consider this. This is different than some of the other four easements that we're not submitting, even that we use routinely from one to the other. This is going to be something different, and I think you need to keep the same now. We give a recommendation to the board, and the board will listen to our, to Neil's.
Now, on the plan, we delineate where development can occur. You know, in other words...
What he's saying is that limits residential development. He doesn't believe it restricts housing for agricultural workers, which according to the code can go into any easement. Any ag easement area.
I'm not talking about your easement wording. I don't know about the easement wording. In the past, we have, we have said that within this area, that the easement reflects that it's within that area.
And that's on the map. You'll see that there's an area, you know, this lot, which is farm lot. There's an area here that's delineated for development. So the houses, any residential use goes in that envelope. These structures go into that, and it doesn't extend back running sheds, things like that, that areas. I mean, it's just...
I think it needs to stay, we'll give our recommendation, Neil will...
Can we just stick a note on there that says include all running sheds and everything? Could be limited to that area, but whatever you come up with, we'll look at it. So now, 25, prior to the issuance of final approval, you have to consider monitoring, well monitoring protocol for on and off-site wells for approval by the planning board? Okay, so that stays it.
It's actually...
Next. What's the next one?
Number 26.
26.
The condition says that the specific, specific location and orientation of the proposed residential structures are not hereby approved. Prior to final approval, this is what it said, a limit, this is the one that's carried out. Prior to final approval, the applicant must identify the specific locations of these structures, demonstrate their compliance with the zoning code, including others. So it can be satisfied that the specific design layer of the project is code compliant. So the question is, by now, do you have the specific areas that you want these homes, the orientation and location of the homes? And then Neil has to ensure whether those are code compliant. If so, if so, we can take this out.
Well, 9729, if you go back to, go back to old condition number one, that is no longer on this. Yeah, it says that we complied with section 9729 and 9721, the second, the rest is... First one's to have done that, we did that in February 7, 2018. Already, I mean, this...
All I can tell you is that what happened is that you have now stated that this is the orientation location of all your homes. Neil? The orientation location of all their homes is set in stone. The only thing we need is this condition distributed to determine whether or not those are code compliant. I'm not asking you right now.
Well, as part of the, the reason why the original condition number one came back, came out, is that we actually prepared documents that said finished floor elevations, roof line elevations, based on the visual analysis, and with the little sighting of this.
What about the orientation's got side line?
Pretty much also. We have, well, we established large lines and then we have, we established... So you have the... And then the house, you know, it's not, not a whole lot of work we worked here, so. The house, this isn't exact, other prints at the house.
I think that's what we did, we did this later.
No, we're not going to, we're not going to make an exact reference of the house, great, if we, the on location.
Were we talking about building envelopes?
We have, we have building envelopes, you know. We have building finished floor elevations, reusable elevations, and bridge line, roof line, bridge line.
What about the orientation? Orientation is this point we have right here. There's not much, there's not much flexibility anywhere. The houses face the street, well, I mean, well, that's going to be the orientation.
Right.
Unless I say it's someplace... Somebody could buy a lot and say, now I want to turn it.
No, I mean, if you wanted to move the house, if you let them move the house two feet or three feet, I mean, there's probably no...
That's not orientation. We want the orientation. Parallel to the street front.
We want this house to front on the open road.
We should probably put that in here just as well. Why don't you put that on, no...
Probably the only ones that might, and I'm just going off of Goshen Properties, is if we look at a corner, if somebody wanted to orient their corner house, it's probably the only thing that might have a discussion.
If we have to, if we have to change in finding your code.
Yeah, well, I think all they said was they wanted Neil to review it and say he now agrees it's in compliance.
And he had a note of that, saying that all the homes will be oriented. The front of the home will be parallel to the road project. Unless you have a corner line.
Well, there, there, I'm looking at one right here.
Well, I don't know, determine which one.
Good crazy, and we'll take a look at it.
How about we'll do, we'll write, we'll say, parallel to the road or parallel to the corner?
Well, I can look at first, that one right here, and turn right closest to me.
Yeah, same stuff.
On the outside, no, right there. That one's parallel with the road. Is that into the curving or not yet?
No, no.
Okay.
Well, why don't you suggest language for mapping, and we'll look at it.
We're not, we're not still doing balloon tests, are we?
No. Soon as we agree with this note, then this will come out.
The whole thing goes away, because we don't have to play. All right, what's the next one?
The next one, 35, 27, 27, 35.
That is what, first to the center, the owner's center. What we propose is, pretty much as we said before, we want to keep this area open for frisbee ball, whatever, you know, pickup things. And then also, and then have a seating area up to the, up to the corner. I would propose, you know, a couple, two benches, some lamp tables, some hardtines. We'll put bike rack up.
Is one bike rack enough?
There's a blind bike, there's a blind.
You can't lock it.
Can't lock it.
We don't want, we don't want people locking bikes around here. I mean, you know, if you sit here, you push a bike there, then you pick it up and go, and they want to walk.
There you go. Play that soccer game or something that Prisby was talking about.
If we put a bike rack, do you think we'd be able to?
Well, put the bike rack on the...
No, no, you're not going to just put like a one. I'm sorry, but I've seen those.
Oh, a one bike?
No, 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 we'll have a bike rack.
Okay, just so we're clear.
So put that on the plan, that you can have a bike rack there.
And the benches.
And the benches are there in detail.
Okay, okay.
So then, this would come out because it's now on the plan?
Right.
I like the way you...
Only sometimes. Once you ain't driving, you find there's a dark side out there, but sometimes you don't like the dark. I know.
That's just...
So where are we at now?
I don't know, we're waiting.
We're 34? 34, 45, areas of non-disturbance. Identified on the plan is buffer for mitigation of visual impacts, so not going to be restriction and sight. No, shall have a restriction. Cyclone rotations acceptable to the planning board agenda.
You had asked the staff, and we don't discuss the staff meeting, because there were no areas of non-disturbance that were identified on the plan as buffers for mitigation of visual impacts. The only thing that was discussed were plantings along the corridor. So the areas were not on...
What she's saying is there are no areas of non-disturbance that we might on the plan, and has buffers for mitigation of visual area. So how do we have deed restrictions for?
The whole, I mean, most of the, well, this whole... This is all, we're donating, offering to dedicate that to the town, and it's going to deed restriction. This is all open space, deed restricted. This is a single-family lot, but it is existing. This actually, the driveway's going into a faraway, so we're not even cutting the tree down to get that driveway in. And this is all under the ag or, or deed restriction.
I looked at the mitigations for the visual impact, and all it talked about was the properties in peanut groves, forests, that first part, and additional plantings along Old Chester Road and the Golden River. There didn't show any areas of non-disturbance, but that is what we put here.
I think you're all agreed.
We did, yeah, we did, there's plans for some of those, I think so.
Yeah, you're on the same side here. I don't think there's anything to argue about. I think you both are saying that can go away, because there aren't any identified to have deed restrictions for, right? Okay, that one can go away, sir.
Is that it?
35, 46. 35, number 46. This is the wetlands that are on open area. They'll be, hopefully, all by the town, so that's a sort of root point. And then we're also providing easements to what, you know, like, access to be taken. Like, another one, okay, the language that was...
Well, are there wetlands outside of areas dedicated to the town?
One, yeah.
Is the well partial, and then a couple lots?
Yeah.
Yeah, lot one and lot two?
There was a lot back here.
Lot nine?
No, actually, no.
Aren't those wetlands, I mean, are they just a restatement of the state federal wetland or? Are there seven or do you say?
Should be the homeowner's responsibility.
It is all.
Well, you don't know, homeowner, so he, the HOA is responsible.
But the HOA owns?
Well, there's some that are...
The ones on the private lot, I think that the staff, the lot owners would be responsible for wetlands on there. That's not what the condition said.
That does, that's...
Yeah, the list, Flot, the owners of such, 76, 77, and 78 are not part of the homeowners association. The owners of such lots are responsible for portions of this regulated, they're located within the boundary.
So I, I see what you're saying.
State and federal law says, anyway, you own the wetland, you're responsible for it under state and federal law. There's no reason to have that.
All right, let's take that.
All in my frame, stormwater facility, so I can market and say, jump waste streams has approved as planning board.
Is that on the plan? Well, we gave you the cut sheet of what it looked like, so we just need to have, it requires more...
We still, we like it, right.
So somebody just has to make sure it gets on the...
Can you include it in the details?
Yeah, yes.
Soon as you do that, just open them up, so that it stays.
Next?
Is it?
That's it? All right, go away.
See you later.
Oh, I have a motion that they go. I like to say it was fun, but it really wasn't. Yeah, I know.
Do appreciate your time.
That's why we get the big money. Yeah, yeah, we're happy to be giving you the finger on top. Glad to have you, you're good, it's all me.
Correct, well, you're a couple of legends, I'm usually.
Yeah, I already, I already told Doug, he needs to blame you for something horrific, I would tone up to him, just miss me any time. All right, thank you, have a good one.
Good night.
Uh, I don't know, soon we not listen to Rick, and we close this meeting, Frank, Frankie, what's up?
What should I, I want to talk to you about, because it involves what an applicant is doing now to get Rick to come back. This is with respect to Maplewood. And it was a little unclear with respect to the traffic studies as to what was required. Dennis, Lindsey, and I spoke today, and the traffic consultants, one for the planning board, and traffic consultant for the applicant. We also had a meeting today. And it seemed very clear that this board wanted the applicant... And it seemed very clear that this board wanted the applicant to go ahead and use whatever it could from the prior DDIAS, but the information was somewhat dated, whatever it could use, it could continue with that. The consultants, I think there are 12 intersections or something that are required. And what the two consultants, the two experts, traffic experts said collectively, they said, all right, we believe, in our expert opinion, that we can pick four intersections that will be representative of traffic increase throughout this entire area. So if we go ahead and just test those four areas, we can then extrapolate out to all of the other intersections and come up with a plan, rather than having traffic counts in each one of the 12, in their expert opinions.
Our guy and their guy.
Yes, yes. And that's a thing to hear, reasonable, it seems in line with my recollection, Dennis Lindsay's recollection, you know, the discussions on it, um, and so we just wanted to pass it by you, and if you have no problems, that's what we'll do. But we didn't want them to go out and do something and then come back later and say, no, we wanted five counts of that. But in their expert opinions, they picked four, and said, well, if there's traffic increases here, or not, that starts to mean that there's, you know, traffic increases at the others. And, and, yeah, they, they agree with the same four, um, and I'm, I'm not sure what the, actually, I know ours insisted on the four, and the others said, fine, that's fine with us.
I was just gonna say, I would, I think it would help if, if this board looked at those, just so we have no discussion later on, that, geez, I would have picked this one instead, I just, it makes it cleaner. No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, but I'm saying, if we're gonna have anything, geez, this one's in one, would have been impacted, I'd rather have that now than later.
Well, which four did they pick?
I don't know that. But I mean, there is a difference between deciding the planning board which ones you want studied, and from an expert saying, if you do these.
I can extrapolate from that.
I can extrapolate these, and from a science point of view, that makes sense. I don't know that the planning board could simply say, well, I want that one, I think you should extrapolate from that, when the, your own expert is saying, that's not the one to extrapolate.
Yeah, well, I'd say, far away from traffic study, so that, I couldn't offer.
I mean, there are many things that the board basically defers to the consultants to say, you know, for stormwater management and things, you, you don't say, well, I think you ought to study a different area, if Sean says, no, this is the area you ought to study. And in fact, what the courts say is that if you do that, that's patently arbitrary and capricious, because you're going against your own expert as to what the science is on that area. Yes.
Can they use, like, if they're talking about redoing seven, the interchanges on seventeen and stuff like that, you know, they take back to that kind of change that could occur in four or five years, and the, and the patterns?
Typically, they do, I don't know exactly what they're, they're doing with respect to a specific intersection, but every traffic study I know looks at the plans that are in the works for DOT and county, and incorporates that into their study. Because it would be wrong if they knew that these things were going to happen and they didn't take them into account.
Yeah, even, anything that's maybe fifteen or twenty years down the road, like widening that, increasing the number of lanes in the road or something like that also? Anything that's.
I think that, I think that there are standards as to the types of future projects that are taken into account by traffic engineers.
In other words, how far in the future can you go, based on something that's actually been funded, a study that's been funded, and something that's.
Right, and, and I, I can't answer the question specifically, but I'm saying, I believe that there are standards that traffic engineers have for determining, well, if it's simply a glean in a congressman's eye, we don't, we don't include that. But if in fact they have commissioned studies to do it, I don't know if these are the criteria. Then we go ahead and include, but those types of things are bread and butter for the traffic engineers as to what they include on, on potential future changes.
Well, they're going to take one typical intersection, um, let's say it's a rural area, and they're going to count the cars, and then they're going to anticipate based on the development, how many, what the increase is going to be.
Well, they're going to do it as four intersections.
For four, and if they do it for one, it's, there's going to be one, it's going to be typical, typical of three or four others. And then they, how do they know what the traffic counts are on the, are on the others? Do they have traffic counts that were done earlier?
Yeah, they have, yeah, they have traffic counts that were done on all of these, from the prior study.
Okay.
This was simply an update.
Right.
And what they said is the reasonable way to update is to pick four that are representative. We can extrapolate based upon the engineering of traffic studies to say, this is what the impact is, and then you deal with the impact.
Yeah, I mean, unless somebody here thinks you're more of an expert than the guys we hired, I think we should go from there. Are they working off the traffic study, or is it going by?
My understanding is that they're working off the general traffic study that was done, as well as the specific traffic study that was done.
I think we had, then we had that one where it was a joint one, preparation.
Yeah, we have that one, plus the town had one. Okay, all right. That makes sense, as long as we have all the other numbers, yeah.
Yes.
Anything else?
I have nothing else to say.
Kind of motion, we get out of here?
I just have one, one meeting coming up, I'm sorry. Uh, May fourth, uh, the town and the builder are going to have a joint economic development meeting. Uh, they are, they're, they actually have, uh, pardon?
What is it?
May fourth is a Wednesday, just before your other meeting, you have a meeting on Thursday. They are getting, uh, the people from Tatters for Progress, are just getting, uh, Green, Talon, and a couple other people like that.
You gonna get to take two more seats?
They, uh, anyhow, they are getting, they are getting the heavy hitters for economic development. Uh, but anyhow, they're just going to be here, uh, in the, the town and the builder.
What, what time is it?
Yeah, thank you. The, uh, delegate, uh, Maple.
What, what time is that, is May fourth?
It's gonna be seven o'clock until nine o'clock, May fourth.
Thank you.
Here?
Here, yeah.
Oh, I need a second on the closing of the.
I'll second it.
Please, all the favor, please, ah, ah, you're good. Right, yeah. I'll go anywhere you want. You, you wait there, you can sit out on the front, and look to the left, and look to the right.